How's everyone doing? Doing OK?
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, sorry, we had to start a couple minutes late. Our agenda was posted a little late and by the rules, we had to start at 10:04. So we're a little beyond 10:04. So I'd like to call to order the December 19th Board of Commissioners meeting, note the presence of all three commissioners. I'd like to have Karen Sanchez lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I want you to bear with me, Mike. I have, this is the last board meeting of 2024, and I have a lot to say. So bear with me. You know, as this is a season of reflection, I would like to reflect on some of the great things that we achieved as a board and as a county this year. I'm extremely proud of the progress we have made towards housing and mental health, securing funds for infrastructure, and supporting working families with paid parental leave, childcare grants, and much more. We will have some exciting communication materials coming out over the next few weeks that will highlight a lot of our county's successes and achievements. So make sure you're following the county's social media and subscribe to our newsletters to get to see these great videos and publications our communications team is putting together. But before we move on to 2025, I did want to highlight a few things that I'm proud that we accomplished. We announced an $18 million investment in a state-of-the-art emergency behavioral health crisis center, which will provide 24/7 crisis care and support for those who need it most. We made a historic investment in our public defender's office so that every resident in Montgomery County has the opportunity to receive the quality representation that they deserve. We made free period products available in all county-owned facilities and distributed 3.5 million to the county's daycare providers. We honored EMS and fire volunteers with a new tax rebate program. And we honored our county employees by offering competitive benefits and compensation to ensure that we recruit and retain top talent to serve our residents. So I want to take a moment to thank my colleagues for the work that they did in partnership with our office. I'd like to thank our talented staff, many of which are in this room. And to any county employees watching online, we couldn't have done this work without all of you. So I want to thank you for your work, and I hope you take some time this holiday season to get the rest and reward that you deserve. To wrap up the year, the 2025 proposed budget and five-year capital plan will be up for adoption in today's meeting. Last week, we held two public hearings regarding that budget, or this budget. I want to thank everyone who attended and commented on the budget, and we received much-needed input from community members, the Narwhal Library renovation project, the county pension and maintaining our AA Moody's rating, our priorities around housing homelessness and prevention prevention, food insecurity issues, and state and federal grant funding to support our programs. We appreciate everyone who took the time to provide input on the budget, and I want to reiterate my thanks to our finance team for their hard work on this proposal. Next up, as we round out the year and move through the winter season, we have a major announcement to make today. I am proud to announce that today, well, I'm proud to announce today that the county has partnered with the Borough of Lansdale and Resources for Human Development to open a new year-round shelter early next year. In today's meeting, hopefully, we will be voting on the authorization of a lease for a facility in Lansdale that will provide resources and short-term supportive housing for residents experiencing homelessness. It will house approximately 20 individuals in single and double occupancy rooms. The shelter is a monumental step forward to our mission to address housing insecurity across Montgomery County. And most importantly, this is a demonstration of our fulfillment, our promise to our residents in Montgomery County. When I came into office, I stated that providing housing for our most vulnerable community members was one of my top priorities. Today's announcement is a huge milestone towards that goal. And in addition to short-term housing, this space will provide person-centered wraparound services to help our friends and neighbors secure permanent housing, healthcare, and other community services. This year-round shelter is in addition to the second Co-Blue Shelter that recently opened in Lansdale. Lansdale Borough regularly sees 27 to 38 residents who experience homelessness at any given time. When we open, this year-round supportive housing facility will reduce the number of unsheltered individuals in Lansdale area by 75%, up to 75%. I am deeply thankful to Lansdale Borough for stepping up and having the courage and willingness to work with us on this issue. Lansdale Borough manager John Ernst has always been at the table with us to collaborate on this important issue. He was a part of our homeless task force last year and a participant in our affordable housing summit earlier this year. Borough Council President Mary Fuller, Mayor Gary Herbert, and the entire Borough Council and so many friends in Lansdale have been committed stakeholders in our efforts to develop strategies to limit homelessness across the county, and we are thankful for their partnership. I'd like to give Mary, Borough President Mary Fuller, an opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner Winder. I hope everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you so much. What a proud day this is for both of us, for the Borough of Lansdale and for Montgomery County. We can tell you on behalf of Lansdale how much we appreciate this partnership, how much your efforts in concert with Lansdale's efforts will make a difference in the Borough of Lansdale, particularly for the vulnerable population of our unhoused. It's no secret, this has been a growing population, and it's been important, many communities have spoken about how, what can we do? We see this growing problem, and it's, and people talk about it and sometimes leave it just there. But the partnership between the Borough of Lansdale and Montgomery County and the commissioners and the staff, the human services staff, has just been phenomenal, and it's such a great example of what can be done when we all work together, when we are serious about identifying a problem and finding a solution. Our community, I will give hats off to them since a core group of us have started this conversation in Lansdale to identify potential properties for the county to partner with us on. We got nothing but support from our residents. I think we expected some negativity, and I'm proud to report that the feedback we've gotten has been nothing but positive, and our residents are grateful that we're stepping up to help those vulnerable people in our community. So again, hats off, and to the speed at which this was done. I know we often get criticized in government for moving slowly, and I think if we're all honest, it does move too slowly sometimes for our liking, but in this case, we really got on this, and we all worked so hard together, and I'm just ecstatic about this outcome and what it will do to make a difference in the lives of the people who need us. So thank you so much to county commissioners and the staff at the county, and of course, all those involved, Lansdale Borough Council, Borough Administration, who helped, the staff who helped us make sure these properties could be available, and looking forward to seeing the great things we'll accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary, and it's been good to work with you this year, and thank you for your leadership. We are also grateful to RHD, our service provider, for bringing their innovative, quality services to our residents. Today, we have President, RHD's President and CEO, Brian Matthew Rhodes, and COO, Tamika Curry, as well as Christina Jordan, Program Director, who is on the front lines throughout Montgomery County, really helping with this work. So I'm going to invite Christina up to say a few words.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Thank you, commissioners. My name is Christina Jordan. I'm the Program Director of RHD's Montgomery County Homeless Service Programs, and I am thrilled to be here with our CEO, Brian Rhodes, our COO, Tamika Curry, and as well as our Chief Communication, Culture, and Marketing Officer, Baroness Martin. Homelessness is a complex public health problem, and it really can happen to anyone. We also know that our communities are strongest when all of their members are getting their basic needs met. We are so grateful for this partnership to Lansdale, to the commissioners and the county, and for the community that supports these types of services. We know that the only way to solve homelessness is to solve it together, and this is one giant step towards doing so in Montgomery County. Thank you all.
Thank you, Christina. And I want to share that, you know, we had the opportunity to meet at a housing discussion last week, and you shared some stories about your experience advocating for homeless individuals across the county, and it really moved me and touched me. You all are truly on the front line. You you all are truly on the front lines, really helping the most vulnerable among us. You could be anywhere in delivering your your time and service, and so I want to just acknowledge that, right? You are all are on the front line, oftentimes facing a lot of criticism, and so we're thrilled that we have a municipality that's stepping up, has the courage to do this this work, and this is just the beginning. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Some of you may know that Saturday, December twenty-first, is the longest night of the year and a day where we acknowledge homeless persons Memorial Day. More than half a million Americans experience homelessness on any given night, and those who do not have safe shelter are at significantly more risk of sickness or death, especially during cold nights. So this is truly life-saving work that we're talking about, and I want to thank everyone who's been a part of it. I want to acknowledge Kaylee Silver, Dr. Williams, Thomas Mosher, our assets and infrastructure team. We had, you know, a lot of conversations internally about how to move at a faster clip, that this was truly life or death, and this is one example of how our talented team of individuals, coupled with our providers and a strong municipal partner, this is how we get things done. Or as our governor says, GSD, does he say GSD? I won't say it here. But I want to thank our internal team for for all of your great work as well. All right, a couple more things. I told you I had a lot. In the spirit of the holidays, we have some special congratulations to some of our local students. First up, the Pottstown High School Chamber Choir won first place in the annual E101 Christmas Choir Competition. Pottsgrove Chamber Choir will proudly represent Montgomery County at the Wells Fargo Center on Sunday at three PM. They will perform their winning song, "Oh Come, Oh Come Emmanuel," with the Trans-Siberian Orchestra, which is really cool. What a fantastic honor. Congratulations. I'm also excited to welcome the Norristown Bengals football team to our meeting today. So guys, come on up. Why don't you stand in front of the podium here? I can see you all in orange. Okay, come on up, stand right here. All right, so the Bengals are the Norristown Youth Athletic Association's under-ten football team. The team members are nine and ten years old and represent different schools in the Norristown area. This is their first year together, and they won the Eastern Region Championship, right? Did I get that right? In their debut Pop Warner season, they then, and I saw all these pictures on Facebook, they then traveled to Florida for Nationals and came in second place, which is a big win. And I I heard I heard you went to, did you go to SeaWorld?
Yes.
How was that? Yeah, where else did you go?
Universal Studios.
Universal Studios, really? Okay, so what was the favorite ride?
Mummy Ride.
The Mummy Ride, yeah? Cool. So so look, I've been following your season this this past past year. I know Coach, you know, brought the team together. I know you all did a lot of work to ensure that this team was supported in the community, and we're just so proud of what you accomplished here in Montgomery County, but that you represented Montgomery County and Norristown in Florida. So congratulations to you all. I want to I want to recognize Ingrid Parker as well. She sits on the Norristown Area School Board, but also is the president of the Norristown Youth Athletic Association, and I've also watched your work, Ingrid, to really support this this great group of of kids. So why don't you all come behind, let's come behind, and we're going to take a picture, okay? Come over here. We have the trophy, right? All right, so we have this for you. Guys, so why don't you hold this, okay? All right, I'm going to get behind, and we're going to take a picture. So we'll probably need to squeeze in.
Yeah, just a little bit on that. Squeeze in a little bit. Guys, come on down here a little bit. Yeah, you can get behind. This is great. All right, right here. Three, two, one, I'm going to take a couple of them, okay? Keep looking. Three, two, one, one more. And good.
All right, thank you for coming. You want us to get, want me to get you a note to get out of school? Is that what you're going to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, great, thank you. I know that you couldn't do this without parents, so, all right. Bye, bye, guys, see you later. Two more, two more things as they're leaving. As I mentioned, this is the last Board of Commissioners meeting for 2024. We look forward, we look forward to seeing you again next year. I want to also wish everyone a peaceful holiday season, however you and your family celebrate. I'll also wish you a safe and happy New Year. As a reminder, the county is collecting donations for families in need this season. We are collecting new coats for adults and children through January third. We are collecting toys and gift cards through Christmas Eve, December twenty-fourth. Residents can drop off toys to the DeKalb Center or any of our county facilities in Norristown, Lansdale, Pottstown, West Norton, and Conshohocken. You can also email gift cards directly to Veronica Hillman, our rock star who leads these efforts, or buy toys through the Amazon wishlist. And I want to thank you, whatever, you know, whatever you're doing this holiday season, I want to thank you all for your hard work this year, and want to thank anyone that's given a donation. And to close, and I'm going to get to our controller at another point in the meeting, so you don't get off the hook, okay? But I want to close my opening comments. I want to say a special farewell to John Doyle, who's in the back of the room, our behind-the-scenes AV specialist. So I've known you since I was a kid. When I went to Norristown, your your mother, your mother casted me in the Miracle World when I was, I believe, in like fifth, fifth grade. So I've known you a long, long time. Today is John's last meeting, and while we may not always see him, he has been a fixture at our meetings since two thousand four. For the last twenty years, John and his signature long scarf displayed proudly today could be seen popping in and out of the AV control closet of the boardroom. You've been an asset to the county for so many years. You have a true passion for public service. I know the work that you did with Norristown Area Public Schools, giving students an opportunity to explore roles in communications. I actually studied communications when I went to Penn State, and so I want to thank you for offering your time and talents to Montgomery County, and we're going to miss you greatly, and it's been a true pleasure to work with you. So I want to thank you for your service. We have a special plaque for you, so we're going to make you come up here and be behind the scenes. Let's give, let's give John a round of applause. Three, two, one, three, two, one. Let's give John a round of applause. Oh, you're just, sorry. Okay, it doesn't matter. Okay.
Did a coffee?
I've had this, I got this.
Thought you was delivering.
All right, so thank you for your patience. Lots of exciting things going on today, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner McKeever.
Quite a keep it a bit shorter because it's going to be a longer meeting, but as Commissioner Winder mentioned, this has really been a tremendous year of, thank you, as Commissioner Winder mentioned, this has been a tremendous year of accomplishments, and, you know, she had about a year on both Commissioner DiBello and I, but really has done an extraordinary job, leading us and leading the agenda of so many of the things that you discuss, that she just discussed. One of the things that I'm proud of, our first vote was a hundred percent county property tax rebate for volunteer firefighters and EMS professionals. We became the largest county in the Commonwealth to enact that policy, and ever since, we've had counties reach out to us, asking us for the language of our ordinance and municipalities that are doing the exact same thing to follow suit, to provide relief on school property taxes as well. Proud to say that over a hundred Monco families have been able to address safety and sustainability issues in their homes, thanks to the whole home repairs program, which is passed by the state and implemented by the county. We've made progress on climate, housing, public safety, and and so much more. As Commissioner Winder mentioned, Montgomery County now has the most generous parental daily policy in the public sector in Pennsylvania. We've invested in in ensuring that we address food insecurity throughout the county, which we have a number of initiatives you'll hear more about today, I think, in the budget conversations. We are closer to having a hydroelectric dam on the Schuylkill River, and we did all of this with input from the public. Over a hundred ninety people participated in public comment in twenty twenty-four. That's over five hundred and seventy minutes, almost ten hours of direct feedback, both on the road and here. Yes, I always give the stats. Thanks, Megan, for the stats. But it's, you know, it's really just been an extraordinary honor to have this opportunity across the county, and we were, Commissioner Winder, I went to Parisburg yesterday, we saw the governor, and he's very proud to show the plunger that he used to use to to light the Christmas tree. I don't know if any of the raw officers remember this, but, you know, getting the chance to be there with the county and celebrate the holidays, and I think that was the first time it was Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and Christmas, and, you know, we were able to do that just last week. And I wanted to particularly just thank everyone who is working in the county on all the critical functions that continue through the holidays, and I'll mention more of that in my closing remarks, but I just have a deep appreciation for everything that is done in our county services for children and youth who we were with yesterday. We accepted a number of donations from a fantastic company, Artfield, in King of Prussia. They gave bicycles, they gave toys to families who wouldn't otherwise be able to provide that for children who have received services or the county has administered and taken care of, and just being able to provide. The services that we do in in human services can make it, just a light-changing difference for so many kids and families. So it's it's an honor to see that and be a part of that work and to support the county leaders who make it happen. One of the things that I just want to mention today we're going to be voting on is closing out the grant for the Green Lane Master Plan. We issued a draft back in March for public review, and the final plan is going to be published in the new year, but it's going to provide ongoing, we're going to be providing ongoing updates to Green Lane Park, including in relation to the trail, the land, environmental planning, and education programming around that, so keep an eye out for that in the new year, which is, you know, just a fantastic resource that the county has in Green Lane Park. And with that, I will turn it over, and we'll come back to talk more at the end of the meeting in terms of holidays and and a few other comments, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner DiBello.
They have really good comments.
Thank you.
Covered a lot. Yeah, I can't believe it's been a year since we were sworn in or it's, we're closing out our first year as our county commissioners, and as mentioned, there's many, many things that we accomplished. I think two big things is that was kind of wrapped up into there was, you know, bringing our county commissioner meetings on the road, which was a huge success the two times we did it, extending our public comment. As you can tell, that people really took advantage of us extending that public comment period because we we really do want to hear and and, you know, directly from the people and from the community, so it's great that we were able to achieve that. And, you know, as three commissioners, I've said this over and over, that even though from time to time, we haven't maybe not, we may not necessarily agree on everything all the time, but we we did strive to work together to do what we felt was the best thing for Montgomery County throughout two thousand and twenty-four, and I I believe that we we definitely hit the mark there. And we also, and I'm surprised Commissioner McKeever didn't mention it, but we did have a big election.
I know. First time I didn't mention it.
I know, you didn't mention it, but there's, and I will, I will, you know, Commissioner McKeever, this was a, this was one of his primary goals for this year, to have successful election, and that he worked hard on on trying to achieve that. Like I said, we we did a lot throughout, prepared for November, and I I think that his efforts were commended on, you know, trying to do what was best for Montgomery County. Commissioner Winder, as our, as a chairwoman this year, I think that she did a phenomenal job. I think that we kept the the tone as far as our meetings were friendly and receptive and and, you know, we were approachable as as commissioners, and I think that that goes a long way from our community standpoint, when we're able to sit here and interact with with each other. We kid around with each other, and we also take things very seriously when when necessary. We we accomplished a lot through two thousand and twenty-four, and I look forward to what two thousand and twenty-five hasn't stored for us. Couple other things real quick. There was Project Blue Light on twelve, December tenth, which was the Horsham Police Department's annual Project Blue Light event. This event is a way to honor police officers who lost their lives while serving Montgomery County and a way to show the support for the families they left behind. It was a real honor for me to participate this year. I think I I have mentioned this before, my my father was a police officer, so I know what it was like when we experienced that every day. He he left the house, and you always had that in the back of your mind, you know, will he be returning? And, you know, thank God that, you know, we never experienced what these families have experienced through or are part of this Project Blue Light, or any officers that lost their life through Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, or across the nation. We owe great debt to these officers. I think that they put our safety above everything else, so they're there for us every day, and I I know that we, as commissioners, appreciate all our law enforcement officers throughout Montgomery County and beyond, and everything that they're doing for us. We had another pedestrian bridge ribbon cutting. I was up in Pottstown, we, it was the Riverfront Park, that was part of the Monco twenty forty Grant Program. We granted, or the commissioners granted, Pottstown two hundred thousand dollars so they could refurbish a walking bridge over Montany Creek. They made some great improvements to the creek bed that were, which had been flooded quite a bit in the recent years. The bridge is also a very important connection for the Schuylkill River Trail, so we are glad to restore that access. And we did take a quick rock down the trail and across the bridge. It was, actually, it was a beautiful day out when we were there, because, you know, in December, you never know how the weather's going to be, so we were. in December, you never know how the weather's going to be, so we were, I think we were at a, Commissioner McKees and I self, a couple weeks ago, we were at Montgomery County Community College for the ribbon cutting of their culinary arts new building, and it was cold. And so we were outside doing that ribbon cutting, but, so you never know with the weather in December. So this week, this month, I have the pleasure of announcing the Way to Go winners for December. These are the Monco employees who have excelled in their roles and have been chosen by their peers for this honor. First up, we have Rebecca Blacketter, is an environmental educator in our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Department. Rebecca takes initiative and gets involved in any way she can. She brings positive energy and is always eager to explore new ways to engage with residents. And I'm sure Rebecca's here with us today? Always like to check. Nope? Okay. Next up is Carrie Holmes, is a accounting technician in the controller's office. Carrie provides a steady hand and sympathetic ear while working to resolve issues correctly and in timely fashion. She is a tremendous asset to her coworkers. Is Carrie here? Next up is Henry Tofini, provides office support for our audit probation, I'm sorry, our adult probation office. Henry's coworkers say he's a very hardworking, kind, and generous individual who brings endless joy to his coworkers. Is Henry here? Oh, there's Henry. Great, thank you for being here. Next up is Diana Wasneck, she is a senior district court clerk at the district's courts, 28-1-25. Diana is considerate, patient, well-versed in all office procedures and what can be her hectic setting. She always keeps her calm demeanor and always displays courtesy to all. Is Diana here? Oh, there you go. All right, thank you. And last up, Rebecca Wheeler is a senior manager, provider, relations, eligibility in our Office of Children and Youth within the Department of Health and Human Services. Rebecca's dedication to the children and youth served by OCY is extraordinary. She is willing to work long hours and find outside-the-box solutions to ensure they have the support they need. Is Rebecca here? Okay. So with that, do we want to bring them up? So if you're here this evening, this evening, I'm really jumping ahead. We're going to get there. If you're here this morning, why don't you come up and join us for a quick picture?
All right. Thank you.
No free marketing. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. All right, good job.
So finally, I have to wish everyone a very happy holidays, enjoy a season, and a Merry Christmas. However you'll be celebrating next week, I hope it's a time of warmth and happiness for you and your family. The next time we'll see you, as mentioned, will be 2025, so we look forward to seeing all of these smiling faces in January of 2025.
Thank you for your comments. All right, so we'll go to the next section of our meeting. We have Tom Farley here to give us an update on the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority. He's the executive director. Thank you for being here.
Thanks very much. Will I be advancing the slides here? Or, okay. Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to start here with a quick snapshot of what the project includes. We're working on an initial stage to restore passenger rail between Redding and Philadelphia, but the ultimate vision is to extend that all the way to New York as a one-seat ride, similar to the Keystone service that operates between Harrisburg, Philadelphia, and New York. So existing conditions, what's our starting point? We're very fortunate, we have an excellent starting point. There are other projects around the country not so fortunate, but we're starting with a double-track, high-quality railroad, essentially under current conditions, you could operate a passenger train at 80 miles an hour today. So great starting point. There will be some additional track and signal work required. The system does have positive train control. This is a safety system mandated by the federal government. There are legacy stations in Redding, Pottstown, and Phoenixville, and these may, in fact, turn out to be the solutions for providing station facilities in those communities. And a very important last point here, Norfolk Southern is a willing partner. That's not always the case, so we're, so we're very fortunate in that regard. The program that we're in with the federal revenue administration is called the CIDP. That's the Corridor Identification and Development Program. It's a three-step program. The first step is essentially scoping. We're granted up to $500,000. There's no match requirement. The second step is to create a service development plan. I'll explain what that is in just a moment. There's no ceiling identified on that funding, but there is a 10% match required. And step three is preliminary engineering and design and the preparation of environmental documentation. Once again, no ceiling identified for this step, but there's a 20% match required. Next slide, please. So. All right, step one is essentially complete. This, as I mentioned, was largely scoping. There is one outstanding item, and that is finalizing the budget with Norfolk Southern for their participation in step two. And then entering step two, there'll be a new grant agreement. There are a number of forms that have to be required that are ancillary to the execution of the new grant agreement. We would have to, we are going to amend our consultant agreement, and there are a series of other documents, a nondisclosure agreement with the host railroads, things of that nature that all have to take place. So I mentioned, step two is the creation of a service development plan. A lot of this should be relatively familiar for any project, creating formal project goals and objectives, creating a statement of purpose and need. Second item here, identification of and evaluation of alternatives. There's essentially one alternative between Redding and Bridgeport, but from Bridgeport South to Philadelphia, there are a couple of choices, whether to stay on the east or west side of the Schuylkill River. So that'll be a very early step in the process to select that route. Ridership and revenue, operation analysis, stations, some engineer, a little bit of engineering, conceptual engineering to support these other activities. Processing both operating and capital, financial planning, long-term governance that essentially refers to precisely defining what the role of PENDOT will be as our state transportation agency, and public benefits analysis. And then last but not least, and I'll talk about this a little more in a moment, is expanding our public outreach and participation. So stations, Amtrak policy, and we've selected Amtrak as our proposed operator, is that the local community has primary responsibility for the station. This doesn't mean that the authority has no responsibility, it'll be shared. Essentially, that portion within the railroad right-of-way will be our responsibility, so the platform and the canopies, and then the portion outside the building and parking will be the local community's responsibility. As I mentioned before, we are planning stations in Redding, Pottstown, and Phoenixville. Depending on which side of the river we use between Bridgeport and Philadelphia, if we in fact go to the east side of the river, we would go through Norristown, and the Norristown, the existing Norristown Transportation Center would in fact become a station on the route. Specific to Montgomery County, Pottstown is using its 2024 DVRPC, that's Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Annual Work Plan funds to assist with station area planning. And the historic station in Pottstown is in fact a candidate for the future station facilities. Community involvement. We have had an active community involvement program, essentially looking to stakeholder groups, so agencies, municipalities, the public. Like yourselves, the authority does have public monthly meetings, board meetings. We also have a finance committee which conducts monthly and public meetings. But this effort is going to expand, we're going to be seeing more public open houses, public meetings, in-person meetings, as well as virtual. We're going to have a lot of focus on underrepresented populations, environmental justice communities. People may not realize, but the anchor community at the north end of the line, Redding, at one point was the poorest city in the country, not just the state, but the entire country. So a lot of opportunity to create a lot of benefit for a lot of people. And smaller communities, just because a community is on the corridor and is not going to be immediately served by a station does not mean that they're not going to be part of the outreach, that we're going to get them plugged into providing input to the program as well. So funding, a critical piece of the puzzle, money is always a critical piece of the puzzle. In the corridor program itself, there is federal funding through the federal revenue administration. Step one, as I mentioned, is up to $500,000. These next two steps, steps two and step three, are probably on the order of maybe eight or nine to 10 or 12 million dollars total. Those will be finalized with exact amounts as we proceed through the program. Second is a Pennsylvania LSA grant, a local share account grant. This is casino money, so this is not taxpayer money. But prior to the authority being created, Montgomery County took the lead on, in fact, applying for a grant for the project. So that's now been transferred to the authority, that's $250,000, and that's going to be used as match money in the step two activity. We also have received a congressionally mandated grant for $750,000, and similarly, Berks County, before the authority was created, applied for and received that. No match requirement. Remember, you cannot use it to match other federal funds, but it can be used, in fact, for final design and construction when we are exiting the FRA's corridor program. Project time, I'm sorry, funding security. Funding, okay, let's see here. Next one, please. Funding future. There are a lot of federal programs out there that include both planning work, designing work, construction work, and even there's a program in here that does provide for initial operating funds. So lots of, lots of different opportunities to pursue these programs, and in fact, we are starting even now, early as it is, to apply for some of these grants. And state resources, in November, last month, we did apply for another local share account grant, a statewide grant, to provide matching funds in the amount of $1 million towards step three activity. And there are multiple PENDOT programs also that we will be pursuing in the, in the coming months. Project timeline, so here we are, it's December 2024. There's a great deal that's been accomplished. We are wrapping up, as I mentioned, step one and about to move into step two. Step three will follow in a little over two years. There's an important point here, one of the date points near the bottom, you'll see here in early 2025, that's reaffirmation by the counties. Very briefly, an authority under Pennsylvania law has a 50-year life. Because there was so much uncertainty with this project when we started, the three counties decided we'll do an initial three-year life and then reaffirm after three years to activate the remaining 47 years. So between now and June, steps will be taken to engage the three counties to take formal action, to reaffirm the continued existence and operation of the authority. So next steps. Your term priority is obviously getting, as I mentioned, out of step one and into step two, we want to make that happen soon. Formalizing our relationships further with the host railroads. Advancing financial planning is an important one, as we continue to apply for new grants. Institutional planning, and I mentioned that in terms of long-term governance, and continued coordination with the three communities. We do work closely with all three communities with regard to their efforts on the, on the topic of station development. So I want to say thank you very much to all of you. I want to point out two quick things. I want to recognize Commissioner DiBello and Executive Director Scott France of the Planning Commission, who are both, in fact, serving on the board of the authority. I want to thank them for their service to the authority, and I'd like to invite questions.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your leadership on this work. It sounds like a, you know, really complicated but exciting project, and I still look forward to seeing some of the plans come to fruition. And Commissioner DiBello, thank you for your leadership, and of course, Scott France. What can I say? So glad that you're at the table. Any questions?
I just want to, Tom, thank you for the update. How many different initiatives are we aware of that are, that are out there?
Good question. The original applications to the corridor program numbered well over 100. Of those, this is nationally, this is nationally, of those, I believe 69 were accepted, and of those, only two have gotten into step two so far, but they had in fact begun their work under other programs that pre-existed the corridor, the federal corridor program. So that almost doesn't count, they're on a different path than we are. So we are anticipating that we will be among the very first nationally to move into step two. And additionally, the circumstances I described, remember, I mentioned that we had a great starting point in terms of the physical infrastructure. I think we'll find that we will be among the first to proceed into implementation as well. We're very optimistic in that regard.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to bring that up because of all of the different initiatives out there, we are, even though when the timeline looks long, you know, we are actually moving at a very rapid pace and could be, you know, one of the leaders, if this continues forward, we could be one of the leaders nationally in these corridor programs with everything that we're doing.
Absolutely true. We will definitely be in the first, the first group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Scott France for the Erie Street Prison RFEI issuance.
Thank you very much. Good morning, commissioners. I'm excited as well, and not only for the SRPA, but for the item that I bring for you today, and that's the issuance of the Erie Street Prison RFEI, which stands for Request or Expression of Interest, and we'll repeat that several times today. And I also want to acknowledge that with me today, Patty Guttenplan, Assistant Director of Design and Outreach in our office, Dave Hahn with Assets and Infrastructure. There's a big team behind me, even though I get to stand here, that does, is doing all of this work. And, it says unmute myself, is that okay? Okay, just to make sure. This is a unique project in several ways. It's a uniquely historic resource, both in terms of the architecture as it stands and its past use. Here we have a prison right in the heart, or a former prison right in the heart of downtown Norristown, which you don't see every day, certainly not today. Back in 18, around 1850 when it was built, that was more common. It's a unique approach to what we do with this going forward, looking for a public-private partnership, finding a solution that involves county resources and developer interests and the interests of Norristown. We're looking for win-wins on this project. And it's a unique process. The RFEI is not the most common mechanism, and we'll talk about that more in a moment. But we've set, we've figured out, I think, I think the best way to give us the most opportunity for success in the approach you're going to see. So today is a very important day, just regarding the future of the Erie Street Prison structure and downtown Norristown. And so as we launch the issuance of the RFEI and begin to solicit real proposals for preservation and adaptive reuse of the prison, and a transformation of the tract at DeKalb and Erie Streets, which you can see on the screen to the right there. I'd like to start reiterating the goals, actually, go back a slide, please. Reiterating the goals that have gotten us here, and we announced these back in April, I believe, at a presentation here as well, and have stuck to them, they've helped guide us in the decision-making process. Without reading through them, they, we're looking to maximize our opportunity to set us up for success, which is not an easy ask given the complication of what we're trying to do here. But one of those strategies is to use the entire tract, not just the prison parcel itself, but the adjacent county-owned parking lot, which is made up of several parcels, actually, but by combining that land, we feel we have a wider net that we're going to be able to find solutions and invite developers to think creatively towards this. We want to benefit Norristown, we want to benefit the public, tie this into the Justice Center development happening now, integrate sustainable design, and as we stressed in the beginning, a new level of transparency and community support and involvement through this process. And finally, we need to be financially responsible. We need to limit the county's public funding toward the prison preservation and recognize that that substantial private developer funding will be needed to achieve these goals. Next slide. So, it's been, it's been less than a year since we pivoted to this new approach, and you've seen me in front of this project, but a lot has happened. It seems, again, one of those things seems like a long time, but it really has benefited us and got us to where we are today. Back in April, the demolition permit application to Norristown was rescinded, which kind of formally allowed this to proceed. The conditions assessment report, then, was created over the summer into the early fall. That was a key decision and aspect that the commissioners supported gratefully, in order to give developers the encyclopedic knowledge of the site before they even start thinking about it. So, that product, which we released back in October, is a key element, I think, to giving us the platform to find new ideas. On the public front, we used our new resource in the Planning Commission, Engage Monco, to communicate with the public, to provide a place to put documents that, most of the documents associated with this project have been put online for the public to view and react to. We also engaged a major public survey using that platform. Had over 691 responses, which was a huge success, I think, both residents, employees who come into Norristown, visitors, business owners. I think we captured a lot of input and feedback through that process, and that, a lot of detail is available still on the website of the results of that survey. Not only benefits us in thinking about the project, but we want to do it for the developers, so that they could know what they're coming into, what the people of Norristown wanted to see, and that may, again, help us get a great solution. And then, then we had an open house on October 7th as well, where the public came in and we talked with them in various ways about the new, the Collier study from the beginning, as well as the public survey results. Other informational meetings have taken place. Just a shout-out to the informal participation and access to the Preservation Alliance of Greater Philadelphia, who are a great resource. Norristown staff, kept keeping in touch with them and how this impacts them and what's going on in this tract and how we can coordinate with them. Even sitting down for coffee with local residents or business owners at times, and answering emails of concerned citizens, activists for supporting the prison as well. And even in the start, before we got into the details of this, we reached out to the development community, a few people, and not talking about this project specifically, but just how they go about and what makes projects successful, what we could do to, again, set this up for success. Next slide. So, the RFEI itself, some of us, some of you may be asking, what is an RFEI? And if you're familiar with government purchasing mechanisms and all the stuff in the back of the agenda packet every month here at the Board of Commissioners, this lands somewhere in the middle between the common RFP that we issue for contracts and bids, or an RFI, which is less formal. Somewhere in the middle, we're using it to both get ideas and be flexible without a set contract ready to go with it, but we'll establish that once the finalists are selected and we get to that point later. So, it's kind of a hybrid approach. The RFEI itself sets up a number of components, as you can see on the screen, the site characteristics, again, and it will include that Collier's report and all of its thousands of pages of appendix items, for people to see really what's on the site and, again, help with those proposals. Preservation emphasis is included with the RFEI, that's why we're here, to find a way to preserve at least some or all of the prison through this process. The context of Norristown, what developers can expect, what's happening, both on the county side, on the municipal side, and in the downtown corridors. Public participation, again, sharing the feedback we've gotten from the public with the developers. And then the details, submission requirements, what they should be preparing to submit a proposal, the criteria we'll use to judge that, to help them aspire to what we want to hear and what can lead to a successful application, and the post-submission process, I'll touch on that in a moment. The deadline for this, the RFEI, is April 15th, which, again, seems like a long time, but there's a lot to do for, to get substantial and really useful submissions. We want to make sure we give enough time for the developers to investigate. We'll be hosting tours at set times for tours of the site with respective applicants, as well as a formal Q&amp;A period, which is integrated into the, all processes, RFEI and RFI as well. And, that's the right slide. I do want to touch on one, or two, components that get in the weeds a little, but just to be clear, they are a little more complex. I think we said back in April as well, that there are, in the goal of expanding the site, there are some county uses that we're trying to achieve as well, and that includes office use for the county of up to 40,000 square feet, relocating some non-downtown Norristown facilities into the downtown and to the county campus, and the structured parking. We're taking away over 200 spaces in that existing surface lot, we still need to accommodate that, and we'll have new parking needs based on the office space, as well as the private development that goes into this. So, at minimum, we do need to make sure any proposals include 350 spaces, and we're framing it in a way that allows for opportunity to put up to 500 spaces, or identify if that's not possible, and then we can look for alternatives as that goes. Assets and Infrastructure is working on studying this and giving more details as we go on, but we wanted to put out the rough guidelines to help with developer proposals. Those county uses can be integrated with private development that may be suggested across the tract and in the prison itself, or separated out. And I think the former is the approach we expect to go by, because that does allow more vertical space, more, if you can put private uses on both sides of, both the prison and the parking lot side of that tract, I think that leads to more flexibility and potential. But if a developer sees that they could take that prison lot by itself and give a great idea, that would be financially solvent, both for them, and then we could build on the parking space, or the parking lot, we want to hear that. We don't want to set anything up that discourages or nixes that before we even had a chance to consider it. And then, the second item is the public-private partnership. Sometimes said as P3 for the alliteration aspect of that. And that is the preference, expresses the preference for the county to maintain ownership of the whole site, it's definitely possible, but we would consider, depending on how the proposal comes out, if there's a part that is strictly private development, you know, we could work with that and consider that in the negotiation process. We do think that, A, the county operations should maintain county ownership, and the prison itself, really, for the sake of the long-term, most foolproof way of making sure it stays intact, underlying county ownership with a long-term lease in the vein of 99 years or something like that, which is common, would be the best protective measure to make sure it stays in Norristown, as everyone would like to see. And then, but we leave the door open, creative alternatives will be considered. So, that's, it's a complex issue, you can even get into condo ownership when you go vertical, there may be a place for that as well, but we wanted to leave that open. Next slide. And then, finally, this is my last information slide, just wanted to note or explain what some of the components are in terms of what the developers will be seeing. And we start with, on the right, those aspects are the criteria that will be used to review applications, starting with firm qualifications, their background, experience of the team, if they have similar projects that would lend credence to this approach. Historic preservation, how they propose to ignore, to both preserve part or all of the prison, and what that may end up, turn out to be. Also important, the county facilities, how they get integrated will be looked at, and the design elements of the building, sustainable design, how it fits in with Norristown itself and the DeKalb Street corridor, as well as the county campus. And then, the public-private partnership, again, how that proposal comes out and how that might work will be another thing that we draw upon to determine which applications might have the most potential for success. And finally, we'll also consider minority disadvantaged or women-owned business enterprises as part of the applicant's team, while not required, it certainly is encouraged and would support a strong application if those elements are present as well. So, we hope we get a strong set of responses. We, in the end, will be a review committee set up, and because this is, you know, county property and county financial decisions going into it, that will largely be made up of county staff, of the right people making, reviewing these applications. However, we might be able to fit into the system a way of having advisory reviewers, a few select people from the preservation community or, and/or business environment or municipal staff to be along for that, part of that process, to help, again, give us the most information and make the best decisions. And then, once we have the group of all the applicants and review them, the goal is to create a shortlist, and the reason to do that, the second phase of this, is to ask for more information, to get detailed financial information on their proposals, really get into the nuts and bolts so that we can make the best decision. We didn't want to put that up front and require everyone to get to that level of detail, because it might discourage people who weren't sure if their idea was going to have traction or not, because it does take a lot of investment and time to put these together. So, that's the way we've structured it, to hopefully get the best results in that vein. And then, once we have a selected developer negotiating the conditions of the P3, we'll work with our solicitors to make sure we follow the appropriate public process and legal requirements of this action, but it would, should result in an MOU, and we'll faithfully be presenting that plan to the public when we get to that point. So, not as strict a timeline as laid out, but that all happens after April 15. And finally, I don't want to forget to mention, this will be posted online in our Bonfire System, which can be accessed through developers, and the general public can create an application if they want to see it. We are going to put a summarized version of the RFEI on the Engage Monco site, hopefully by, that should be up by Monday, as this is posted as well. And the reason we don't put the full RFEI is so that we don't create two avenues or two channels and people are getting the wrong information or lead to more confusion. Actual applicants need to go through the Bonfire System, so that's where the full document set will be. But most of the information will be available on the Engage Monco site as well. And anyone in the public who knows developers who do this, who have been thinking about this, who have been contacting their networks, by all means, keep that up, send them our way. Send, you know, they can send them to the site itself, send to me if you have any questions, or if you have how to access it, and we look forward to a success in working with the community and a new vision for DeKalb and Erie Street. And that is all I have.
Thank you. No questions?
Well, I think, you know, thank you for the presentation. I think that what, the way we're laying it out from a county perspective, I think, opens up tremendous opportunities for developers to re-envision the entire parcel, you know, meeting some of the conditions that we need to have in place, you know, like you said, the parking and the office complex and all that. But I think that, you know, I think there's going to be definite interest of parties wanting to be involved in that, especially as Norristown is kind of reinventing itself, revitalizing itself, and, you know, with the campus complex that's underway and all this, it could all start to come together from a lot of connection points. So, I think that we're going to see some amazing submissions over the next couple of months.
Okay, it's exciting.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so next up is public comment, public comments on today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts, and I will allow our row officers, who may be here, to give public comment, to do it at this section. So, Olivia Brady?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sean Kellerman.
We'll just let our two row officers, I'm just assuming you, okay. For Sean, or Sheriff, should be proper.
There we go. I go by both.
Right, exactly. First of all, one of the things I know you're going to comment on later, my friend and county controller here is Karen Sanchez. I had the privilege of running for office with her in 2015, and I'm sad to see her go as a county row officer, but the county's loss will be happening in township's gain, so it's been a pleasure working with you, Karen. So, I'm here as a resident of Jankettown, Montgomery County Sheriff. I want to thank the commissioners, all three of you, for your commitment to public safety. And that's really because of the budget. I see Dean Dortone here, I see Lee here, I know everybody and your whole staff works hard on the budget every year, and your commitment to public safety is steadfast. So, you know, in the sheriff's office, we have dangerous work. Commissioner DeBella talked about his father being a police officer. My father was a police officer as well, so I dealt with the same anxiety growing up as a child. I see some of our deputies here that protect you in the courtroom, and anytime that someone goes out and is at the scanners, or is, you know, serving a warrant or something like that, you know, it could be a very dangerous situation. So, I want to thank you for approving our request for gear, vehicles, and resources necessary to ensure our deputies are properly equipped. In particular, I want to express our deep appreciation of the funds that have provided for our canines and for our protective vests. These vests are critical to ensuring the safety of our hard-working canine units. Your support means a great deal. I also want to thank you for increasing our recruiting budget. That's a big issue, not only in the sheriff's office, but in law enforcement-wide. So, this investment allows us recruiting deputies to broaden our reach and to find the best qualified personnel we can, especially as we transition to the new Justice Center, which is going to have additional needs. I know in the future, Montgomery County will be adding more judges, which is going to be more of a responsibility for our deputies. So, this year also marked a significant milestone for the successful implementation of our e-filing system for civil cases, partnered with our proponentarian, Noah Marlier, in getting that done. So, someone doesn't have to send a courier or someone to come and file, that can all be done online for an additional fee. So, we recognize that you have a lot of competing interests. I saw many of your presentations today, but I want to thank for your commitment to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office and for funding our deputies and helping me and all of us keep Montgomery County safe. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Sheriff. Stay there for a second. I just wanted to, I know you're rolling off the Community College Board, and you were on that board for more than a decade, so I want to thank you for your leadership and work to really ensure that Montgomery County Community College is a gem that really kind of fosters not just young minds, but minds of those that, you know, want to advance their education. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you for your service.
Yeah, and thank you, and it was great to hear Commissioner DeBella and Commissioner McHeezer were at the Culinary Arts Institute opening. I was involved in that process and moving it from Tallow-Minson, I was on the committee that did that, and it's great that it's here in our Blue Bell campus. Also, on Veterans Day, I was with Commissioner DeBella. I'm very proud of our Veteran Center there. I was the, I'm the veteran that's on the Board of Trustees, I'm rolling off, of course, but it's really Dr. Pestecki Perez, her staff, and students, and your support for the Community College, including, you mentioned, Governor Shapiro way back when he moved forward for the dedicated taxing source for the Community College. That really helped the Community College plan ahead, so they can kind of know essentially what they're getting each year. So, I want to thank you.
Great, thank you. Lori's not, yeah, I put her on the spot, sorry, I just made an assumption. So, who do we have next? For public comment? Back to normal, sorry. Olivia Brady?
Good morning, commissioners, and happy holidays. Olivia Brady from the Norristown Municipality. So, as you probably know, I'm here to discuss the Erie Street Prison RFEI. I just wanted to relate a story. I had an opportunity to vacation in Ireland in September, and while in Belfast, we went on a city tour bus, and one of the stops on that city tour bus was the Kremlin Road Jail. Like our jail, although this is a little bit bigger than our jail, but like our jail, it had a rather nefarious and sketchy background with a number of different prisoners and stories that were told there. But unlike our jail, it was readapted to a tourist center and a conference venue. They actually have weddings there as well, which is a little surprising to me, but they had a lot of activities that were going on in that jail. And this building provided a number of different economic benefits to that particular part of Belfast. As I said, it was one of the stops on the city tour bus, which went around all of various different tourist attractions within Belfast, and it offered an opportunity for people to go through this tour that they had, to show what the prisoners experienced, to show what criminal justice was like back in its heyday. So, I bring this to you to show you that maybe that is not necessarily a use for our jail, but the adaptive reuse for our jail can provide an economic benefit to our county seat, that can be really beneficial to Montgomery County, Norristown, and all of the residents to bring a, instead of having a rotting building, a historic building in our midst, to have something that is useful, provides a fresh outlook, and can create a boon for Norristown and the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
BJ Frisch?
BJ Breish?
Morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. My name is BJ Breish. I live in Lansdale Borough, and I also serve as an elected official in Lansdale Borough Councilman. But to be clear, my comments today are my own, and they do not represent any official action or opinion on the borough of Lansdale. I'm here today because I believe we stand at a pivotal moment, a moment where what once seemed impossible is now within our grasp. Through unwavering dedication, collaboration, and some sheer will, we have brought us to this point. As many of you know, public service can be a challenging endeavor. The critical issues of homelessness has been particularly complex and persistent. I admit that I find the slow pace of government to sometimes be very frustrating, especially when we are attempting to address something as critical as this. However, our collective effort culminating in today's resolution number 10 is a shining example of how we can achieve meaningful change together and why this process is so important. Today, I'm here to strongly advocate for the approval of the supportive housing facility in Lansdale Borough. This project represents hope for many and provides a tangible, responsible solution to the persistent problem of homelessness in our community. By supporting this initiative and seeing it through, we have the opportunity to demonstrate to all that the impossible can be achieved through perseverance, collaboration, and compassion. I urge you Commissioners, seize this moment, show the world that when we take an ownership role and collaborative approach towards addressing complex issues, we can develop meaningful, compassionate ways to address the needs of our whole community. Support resolution number 10, the authorization to enter into a lease agreement with the Liberty Bell Realty Company for interim housing in Lansdale. In closing, the approval of this shelter needs to be the start. I hope it challenges other community leaders, and they recognize that we must be bold, and we all have a role to address this issue with compassion and real solutions. Lansdale Borough is how we start. Let's make this much larger than we could ever imagine throughout the entire county. Thank you for your consideration, and I sincerely look forward to more collaborative work together with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, BJ, for your your comments, and I want to thank you for being at the table with us. You brought, you bring in a unique perspective in your in your work, not only just on Borough Council, but just your professional career. So I really enjoyed getting to hear your background and your commitment to helping us advance the ball. So I want to thank you for your words, and hopefully we'll we'll be able to approve that resolution. So thank you. David Morgan?
I'm David Morgan from Amber Borough, and I want my Amber Borough tax bill from the spring, and my millage shows that the millage is 4.788. We had recently a presentation claiming that it was going to change to 4, 8, 5, 5.642 in millage. So if we subtract that, get the gain, sorry, get the gain, and then you divide it by the base amount, I get 17.84% tax increase, not 9%. So I had made a chart to show you what's going on from my perspective. As I teach, you know, I'm a mathematician, but here I have that that rate, and the goal is to go here. So here's our history of rates from 2020, 2020, 2021, 22, 23, 24, 25. Millage increasing from 3.4 up to 5.6, that's really what you want to obtain. Then we have, if you had a tax bill of $600 in 2020, it would then increase by multiplying 1.05, so you get 630, and it goes at 680, and 735 by doing the 1.08 increases. Then you have 880, 1.13, then you have 1,037 if you take that 18% gap between the last year's mills and the proposed top. So if that's the case, 600 changes at 1037. It's really concerning to me, and I have also shown it in graphic form, because you don't just have to add the increases, like 5 plus 8 plus 8, actually multiplication going on. So the first year, you're going in your tax bill, multiply by 5%, then multiply that. So all these multiplies going on raises our tax quite high. And if anyone wants to see these graphs I've made, feel free to see them at the end, because as a taxpayer, I have a heart for other people who are trying to make ends meet today, between school tax raising and other things. I think that people understand there's this chain of tax increases, so 5, 8, 8, 13, and now 18% almost. That's double nine. And also, it's like we have the triple A rating, but if it's bailed out by us each year, it's not that much of an accomplishment, because we're realizing we're footing up projects or capital projects, the bill for those. And also, I see on the horizon a new money bond issue in next year coming up. So that has debt in debt service, and by having all that debt service, we had in our last new money bond, 12.8 million proposed each year to our tax burden until 2043. So that has to be taken into consideration. Here also, ties that tax acceleration in the comparison, like our galloping horse of tax increases. If you start with that presentation of Monaco Delaware County Chester Bucks, and you go 280 at 8, 13, and 17, you get to the worst increase.
You're at time. If you want to show anyone your your details, you can after the meeting. Thank you. Thanks for your comments and your interest in our budget. Héctor De La Sante?
Thanks very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and everyone on this panel there. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone. I'm so happy to be here for the last meeting of the year. It's been quite a labor of love, the county prison and that historic building, and Doug Seiler, his office is right across the street, and it's really in his heart. And I've been kind of walking along with him for about 15 years, maybe I lost track. I can remember standing in front of the post office with a partition for people to sign, the old-fashioned way. And I would go to that in front of that post office, because it was very active in those days, with that partition and get people to sign it and point to the building. I think I got about 1,500 signatures from that, and I think there was also something online at the time. My point is that I am so elated that there are people involved now that can really shake it up and and are shaking it up to bring the attention to this beautiful building that deserves the respect that it has earned for, since what, 1851? I lost track. So I want to thank you all for working together on that. It seems like we're going in the right direction. And the most important part is that the community is kept in mind, because a lot of revenue can come from that project if the visionary has the right vision to generate revenue from that building, to create a destination in town. That is the most important thing, is the destination, the root of everything that is starting to get built up, which we can't even see it all right now, because ground hasn't been broken on most of the projects that are happening. Commissioner DeBella, I want to thank you for supporting our effort before you became Commissioner, and for all of you coming together since the election, and just the comforting, comfortable feeling that myself as a constituent feels when we come in here now. I thank you for that. I'm also happy to hear that there will be hospitality centers built for people that are out on the street, which is very important for the area, for the Norristown area too, because I see a lot of people out on the streets, sleeping on the benches and in doorways of buildings and everything like that, and they really do need help. So my time is up.
Thank you.
I have more to say.
I'm sure you do.
I always do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone.
I just want to make a quick comment. Although that we might had our position before we were all sworn in in '23 could have varied one way or the other, but I will say in '24, when we all became county commissioners collectively, we agreed to pull back, you know, the original plans, working together to get us to where we are today with the RFEI. So I think it's a good collective effort that we're working together for Norristown and preserving, not only the prison, but really developing out that entire corner.
Next up? On Zoom, we have Barbara Furman. Barbara, can you hear us? Nope, we'll give her a chance. Wrong one.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Barbara Furman. I am currently at a township, and I'm sitting at this meeting, been on since 10 o'clock, and it is very hard for a regular citizen to, you know, listen to all these presentations, and we constantly just think more dollar signs. And as we look at this budget, as David Morgan said, you know, we're looking at not a 9% increase in the economy, and if you add that to all the increases over the last four years, it is, it's just really tough on taxpayers. And it's really a time where, you know, at the federal level, at the state level, at the county level, and at the local level, people need to listen to the taxpayers and say, where are places where we can save money? And capital improvements are possibly necessary, but we're spending so much money, and maybe there are things that can be taken out of the budget. And so it would be nice if, and I have to admit, I think the taxpayer sometimes drops the ball, it's a very busy time around election, and can, you know, take off, you know, a little bit of time from watching. It seems, you know, at all levels, they just keep spending our money, and, you know, you're spending our money, and we would like to really consider putting this vote on a pause and voting on it on December 31st and see whether there are some places that you can save money, maybe, you know, a 1% or a 2% decrease in budgets and tighten the belt. We all have to tighten the belt. And oftentimes, it feels like the taxpayer really, although you are hearing us, sometimes you don't feel like you're listening. So I'm just, I think many people share the same sentiment that spending needs to be watched much more closely. It's really easy to spend other people's money, but paying for it is a whole nother, a whole nother aspect. So we are asking that you, you know, consider this in your vote today, that there possibly could be some areas where there could be savings that are not being considered.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, that's it? Okay. All right, next up, I'm going to invite Dean Dortone in for consideration of the proposed 2025 budget.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You might be on the wrong, give us a second, Dean. Come on up.
I was on the general comments list.
That's okay, come on up. Yeah, give us one second.
Commissioner Winder, I just want to say, you do a great job of running this this board, and Mr. McEachran, DeBella, and Soltizziak, I really appreciate the collaboration on how governments changed in the past year. I really appreciate seeing it and witnessing it. I'd like to begin by thanking you for stopping the demolition of the historic Le Brun Prison in downtown Norristown, and for undertaking the effort that leads to today's meeting, where the planning commission recommended the county issue an RFEI for the redevelopment of the prison site and parking lot. I am a business owner who had an architectural firm in downtown Norristown for 25 years, and during that time, I've been active in the community, including assistant as the chairman of the Greater Norristown Corporation, the architect advisor to Norristown's Historic Architectural Review Board, and president of the Norristown Arts Council, among other things. The Arts Council's name is misleading, because it has arts in the name, but the group is the one that studied and launched the Arts Hill Concept, which was an economic concept and a driver to attract destination businesses to a district downtown, which runs from the proposed Trail Junction Center at Lafayette Street, at the Schuylkill River Trail, and Septa Station, up to the end parking lot. The planning commission's recently released conditions report for the former prison is interesting, and it indicates that some effort is required by the county to get the property developer ready, a recommendation that hopefully includes some seed money in the 2025 budget to address some of the more pressing recommendations. What is not stated in the report is my belief that success will also need a comprehensive, strategic, and aesthetic vision undertaken in tandem with the municipality for the six or eight blocks that make up Norristown's downtown core. In other words, the area right around your judicial and administrative district. Such a plan with some level of near-term implementation that focuses on safety, cleanliness, quality of experience is critical to leverage the very positive impact of recent public investments that include the Justice Center, Hancock Square, One Montgomery Plaza, Trail Junction, as well as private developments such as the bid-rise residential at Main and DeKalb. Successful downtown revitalization needs a tangible focus. It needs a wow factor, it needs a rallying point, something that gives residents, and most importantly, outside observers and investors, a reason to climb onboard the Norristown County Seat train. And the castle-like prison is ready-made for the task, and I think it has the potential to make an impact and rebrand Norristown as much as any of the other projects I just mentioned. It's low-hanging fruit, and I just want to thank you and recommend that you make a special effort to preserve this structure for current and future residents of Montgomery County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for those those comments, and, you know, I want to thank you for your for your leadership, and, you know, I know there is a whole group that has been behind this. I know Olivia well, and, you know, we'll see what comes of it, but we wanted to just see the possibilities. So thank you. All right, Dean, you're up.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Next slide, please. As you know, the budget process commenced earlier in the year, in May-June timeframe. We spent the summer months reviewing the budgets in great detail with the departments and then spending time with the commissioners there after we proposed the budget was presented on November 14th, and then two public meetings were held on December 12th. And today is the final action, adoption of the budget, which is required by law by the end of the year. So just to quickly walk through what has already been presented and proposed, the general fund budget includes about a 6000. fund budget includes about a $16 million structural budget deficit. Revenues are about $27 million higher than the '24 budget, roughly 5%. On the expense side, about $43 million higher, just over 7%. So as you can see, we will have a budget deficit of about $16 million on a budget basis. Next slide, please. But the strategy that's been proposed in the budget to balance it is, number one, to increase the real estate tax millage rate. So it would increase the 5.642 mills from the current 5.178 mills. This would add about $28 million, roughly $28 to $29 million of new real estate tax revenue to the general fund. Next slide, please. And that would leave us with ending fund balance unassigned of about $131 million, which is just about 22%. The way that we're going to balance the budget, we're going to cover the gap with appropriations from assigned fund balance. As you can see, the 8.1 million and the 7.7 million on the side. So that will balance us on a budgetary basis and leave us above our policy range. Next slide, please. Overall, you know, revenues are roughly $595 million. Next slide, please. Expenses, roughly $611 million. I'm going to help save a little time here and read some of these numbers in greater detail so that we don't have to go through this later. So the general fund budget is proposing total expenses of $610 million, $945,291. That'll be the action that you'll be taking today on the general fund. Next slide, please. Before I talk about the other funds, I did want to mention two real estate tax assistance programs that are available to the county taxpayers. First is the County Real Estate Tax Deferral Program, which was implemented in 2020. The second is the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue Property Tax Rent Rebate Program. Next slide, please. So the deferral program allows those that qualify homeowners to defer the increase in their real estate tax from one year to the next after they apply to the program. So if their real estate tax went up by $60, they could apply and then defer that amount, which would be collected sometime down the road when the property transfer hands. As you can see, homeowners who are at least 65 years of age will qualify, and there are income limitations, too. Next slide, please. The state program that's been in place for many years, and we try to promote this, there's a lot of people that are aware of it, but there's many that aren't. We get phone calls and we try to, you know, give guidance. And this information's available on the county website. We have links to the state program. But the state rebate program is available to homeowners and renters. And it has a standard rebate up to a maximum of $1,000 annually, depending on your income level. But there's also supplemental rebates that the state implements each year. And right now, that's up to 500. So a total of 1,500 under that program. Again, qualifications, at least 65 years of age, and then obviously the widowers and widowers and the disabled people are eligible. So, next slide, please. As I mentioned, this information is available out on our website, on the finance page, or directly through the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue. So you can apply for this online. And, you know, we encourage anyone that might have questions about it to either contact the state directly, or even the finance department here. We would be helpful, happy to, you know, provide more guidance on it and help out the taxpayers with that. Next slide, please. So in addition to the general fund, you're going to be taking action on the funds that you see up on the screen, or seven special revenue funds and one internal service fund. Again, I'm going to walk through, just bear with me, I'm going to go through each of these in detail as they're laid out in the resolution. So the first one, the Managed Care Solutions Fund, that's our health choice services. That is $253,936,399 of expenditure. The next fund, the Emergency Dispatch Services 911 Fund, $22,000, $26,608,000. The Liquid Fuels Tax Fund is $1,401,093. The Motor Vehicle Registration Fund is $6,65,394. The Property and Liability Damage Fund is $850,000. The Montgomery County Community College Fund is $24,268,000. The American Rescue Plan Act, or the ARPA Fund, is $58,371,170. And the Opioid Settlement Fund is $3,775,467. So that covers all the operating funds that you'll be taking action on today to approve the expenditures. Next slide, please. Moving on to the capital, which is another action that you're going to be taking. Next slide. So as you can see, the total expenditures are $244,392,913. I'm just going to read off the functional categories that are covered by this total expense and are in the '25 budget. The county campus plan is $58,210,000. The asset and infrastructure capital projects are $79,448,111. The planning commission projects are $67,350,100. The information, technology, and solution projects are $17,184,566. The public safety projects are $11,668,340. Economic development projects are $2 million. Rolling stock is $2,814,209. Correction Facility projects are $4,653,99. And then other capital projects is $1,071,788. That gets you to the total of the action that you'll be taking today to approve the capital improvement program for 2025. Next slide. Just roughly, I've shown this slide before that just gives you the breakdown of the total expenses by the functional area. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Dean.
Yep.
So we'll do a few motions here. That's all you have to present, right? That's all you have to present? You presented?
Yes.
All at once. Got it. Okay. All right. So for the 2025 General Fund Operating Budget Millage, I'd like to make a motion by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Montgomery that for the fiscal year 2025, the tax millage rate be levied on all real estate property within the county that is subject to taxation for county purposes shall be 5.642 mills on each $1,000 of assessed valuation of tax property, or 0.5642 cents per $100,000. Wait, 100, not 100,000, $100. I told you, me reading all of this was not. Of assessed valuation of tax property. Be it further resolved that for the fiscal year beginning, wait, no, be it further, gosh, guys, oh, I need a ruler. All right. So let me go back. Be it further resolved that for the general fund expenses of the county totaling $610,945,291 million, right, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, are hereby appropriated from the revenues available for the specific purposes as more fully itemized on the budget form attached and on file in the Office of the County Commissioners' Chief Financial Officer. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mckeesha. Or comments? I have a couple of comments, but I'll let my colleagues go first.
This is our third meeting related to the budget. I just want to thank Dean and the team for all the work that they've done. There's a number of critical investments in here that I've talked about before, and a lot of savings, too. I think millions in savings on operational reductions, at least $3 million, whether it's contracted services, materials and supplies, major or minor equipment, utilities, travel expenses. You also saved another $1 million in refinancing our prior outstanding bond issues. So I appreciate you for finding those areas of savings. And, you know, I'm glad we're able to invest in fixing roads and bridges like the Kime Street Bridge and many others that county residents use on a daily basis. So there's $42 million in this budget to invest in those assets. And parks and trails is another area where I think our residents, you know, see the results and appreciate, you know, resources that are available to, you know, a great number of people. We utilize them in, of course, that's alongside all of the everyday services we provide in the courts and in public safety and human services and the other things that we all know about. So just thank you for putting this together and really coming up with a responsible budget.
Any comments?
I just want to point out that one of the comments earlier with the millages, I'm not sure if it was accurate, but our current millage is 0.51 and change. I don't remember exactly what it is. It's going to 5.5642.
Yeah, that was exactly what I presented in that slide.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that we're, so it's not a 17%. I'm not, look, I've been very clear and open as far as where I've been over the last several weeks with this budget. As I've stated, it's a very complex budget. There's a lot of things underway currently. Many of these projects, you know, we have to continue to support. We're certainly not going to not support them and just stop midstream. So that is part of this. But I also had concerns, and I raised them up. I'm not going to go into the specifics again. But, and the Kime Street Bridge is, I don't know why we keep bringing that up, because that's been approved in 2024. 95% of that funding's coming from the state. So that money is actually part of the 2024 budget. I have my suspicions why we keep bringing that up, but that's irrelevant. So anyway, I thank you for all your hard work and your team. And, you know, I look forward to working in 2025 on this, on our next budget.
You're welcome.
So again, I think I've thanked you a lot of times. But, you know, having done this as a school director, as a supervisor at East Martin, done it in the private sector, right, just going through a budgeting process is highly complex. And, you know, I recognize that just from where I sit, just in having conversations with you and other staff, you know, it's really a complicated dance to really, you know, accomplish the things that we need to accomplish in delivering on our promises to the residents of Montgomery County. And I want to say, you know, because it's important that I think we all take our fiduciary responsibility really serious. You know, many of you know that I come to this dais, I come into the office keeping people centered at all the decisions I make. And being as though, you know, I lost my mom earlier this year. My dad is disabled. He's over 65. And watching some of the challenges that they face, right, trying to stay in their home and, you know, tackle the rising costs, those are, you know, I'm thinking of them, you know, as we sat down and, you know, created this budget. This was hard. And, but we have promises to deliver on. We have commitments that we've made to the community. And, you know, I think a number, well, I know I personally wanted to try and go the other way in terms of a tax increase, and I think we did that year on year. But, you know, we end up kicking the can down the road in terms of some of the future challenges we have. So I just want to say, you know, I take my fiduciary responsibility really serious. There's no luxury spending that's happening here in Montgomery County. When you look at the details, it's really about making life better for the residents of Montgomery County. So I want to thank you and the team for putting this budget together. So with that, we're at a second. We've done board comment. So I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Mckeesha.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBello.
Aye.
Commissioner Winder. Yes. Motion carries. Motion passes. Next up, I'd like to, 2025, we have seven non-general fund budgets, which you've already described. So I'd like to make a motion that the following eight operating budgets with expenditures, that motion passes two to one. Right? I needed to say that, right? The last one?
It has happened. Yep.
It has happened. Okay. Just want to make sure I do it right. All right. Let's make a motion that the following eight operating budgets with expenditures as noted below, well, as described by our chief financial officer, are hereby adopted, and that the proper county officers are authorized and directed in accordance with the county purchasing regulations to expend funds for the fiscal year 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Moving to a roll call vote. Commissioner Mckeesha.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBello.
Aye.
And Commissioner Winder. Aye. Motion carries. Next up, 2025 Capital Fund Budget. I'd like to make a motion that the capital fund budget for the 2025 fiscal year is hereby adopted in the amount of $244,392,913, of which $181,148,317 shall be funds of the county. Be it further resolved that the proper county officers are authorized and directed to proceed with the following capital programs, subject to all of the applicable federal commonwealth and county laws, accordances, regulations, and policies. And this was described by our chief financial officer as well. So we'll move to, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Moving to a roll call vote. Commissioner Mckeesha.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBello.
Aye.
And Commissioner Winder. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now you can go. You'll be on vacation somewhere. Thanks for your patience. All right. So I'm going to make a slightly adjustment here. I'm going to move item resolution number 10 to the front. So after we're done, if you wouldn't mind going over the authorization to enter into a lease agreement with Liberty Bell Realty Company for interim housing in Lansdale.
First, I want to thank B.J. Bryce for essentially doing my resolution for me. So thank you. As discussed, the county has partnered with Lansdale to open a year-round short-term supportive housing program as a resource to those who are unhoused in the borough of Lansdale. And while I'm pleased to just be the presenter and deliverer of this resolution, I want to acknowledge those truly responsible for this plan, including Thomas Mosher, Senior Policy Advisor, under the leadership of Lee Saltisiak, Chief Operating Officer, our municipal partners, Lansdale Council President Mary Fuller, Vice President Meg Curito, sorry, Meg, if I mispronounced your last name, Councilman B.J. Bryce, Mayor Gary Herbert, and Borough Manager John Ernst. The property located at 1107 East Main Street will include single and double occupancy rooms and will house approximately 20 people. The program will be operated by the awardee of the most recent RFP for Shelter Operations Resources for Human Development, or RHD. This resolution is for approval This resolution is for approval of funds to rent the leased property in the amount of $6,800 per month, with a lease term beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2034.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 10, as described by Ms... Not Ms., Dr. Tamara Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mckeesha. Any board comment?
Quick question. Where'd she go? Oh. I was gonna say, wow, you're quick.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Yeah. Quick question, sorry. When you talk about housing 20 people, I just want to make sure we're... What we're talking about is it's mostly... It's like a rotation, like there'd be, you know, we're not just talking 20 people for an entire year. We're talking that at any given time, we're going to be housing 20 people. And as we provide the services and all that, people will be coming out and then, you know, making room and have to be able to keep this rolling and working hard to help these people. But it's not just 20 people.
Yes.
I just wanted to... I know that's not what you're really... I just wanted a little clarification.
Yes, no, that's a great point. Yes, you're correct. It's for 20 people at any given point in time. Typically, on average, it takes about 45 days to get people into permanent housing through rapid rehousing. But there are individuals cycling through, so we want to make sure that we're able to help the maximum number of people. But in this particular location, it will house up to 20 people at any given time.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comment? Okay. Moving to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. This is just the beginning, so really excited about this. So, thank you. All right. So we'll go back up to the top here, and I'm going to just ask anyone that's presenting a resolution, please keep it high-level and succinct so we can be respectful that it's lunchtime. So first up, Eli. He's going to review an authorization to amend the county pandemic recovery plan. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, commissioners, and good afternoon. I'm here today to provide you with an update on the ARPA recovery plan and to talk about the resolution before you to reobligate up to $26 million ahead of the December 31, 2024 obligation deadline. These changes to the original plan are intended to maximize the effectiveness of the investments you have made to strengthen our community as part of the approved recovery plan. Before I begin, I would be remiss not to mention the hard work and dedication of our small but mighty recovery office staff, without whom none of this work would ever have been achieved. So let me take a moment quickly to thank our team of analysts, Terrence Barnes, Ashton Dwyer, Lizzie Casande, Jamie Curt, Newell, Greg Schneider, and Valerie Vellin, as well as our Strategy Director, Latoya Myers. I would also like to thank all of the county employees from virtually every department who have played an active role in the implementation of this ambitious plan. There's too many of you to name today, but we truly could not accomplish this without your help and support. As a reminder, the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, through its state and local fiscal recovery funds, provided Montgomery County with $161.4 million. This was... ARPA is very broad and provided a number of eligible uses, including investments that responded to the public health emergency, responded to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic, increased public sector capacity, provided for premium pay to be given to employees who had to work in person during the pandemic, and invested in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. There were only a few non-eligible uses, which I've listed here, mostly not replenishing, offsetting a tax cut, or replenishing reserve funds, and also not contributing the purpose of ARPA. Next slide. Back in 2021, the county commissioners established the recovery office and embarked on a 10-month-long community engagement process, which included town halls, surveys, and community conversations that established our two main priorities, one of which was that the process needed to be community-informed, transparent, equitable, and accessible to all, and that the investments we had directly supported communities that were hardest hit by the pandemic or who had been historically marginalized or underserved, that these investments were transformative, took advantage of the one-time nature of the funding, that they directly... That responded directly to the impacts of the pandemic or the issues that were made worse by it, and invested in the five community identified areas in need: affordable housing, behavioral health, childcare, emergency response, and digital access. This was just the start of our process, though, and beginning in March of 2022, the recovery office opened up its application portal and sought not just projects, but less fully-baked ideas from anyone in the county, and we also provided technical assistance to anyone who needed it in multiple languages. Following that, the recovery office worked to put the draft plan together. This included engaging an external review team, which included 30 residents of Montgomery County with lived experience. We also had an internal county review team that looked at things from the county's perspective. Once the plan was assembled, we engaged in a public comment period, which allowed for public feedback to be presented and resulted in a few changes to the plan. At the time, we still... We were able to also have meetings with the applicants to find out more about their projects. And then on August 18 of 2022, the commissioners formally adopted the recovery plan. Next slide. As you can see, this resulted in 134 total projects, and if you look at the slide, you can see that it basically ran the gamut of all of the various investment opportunities, going from government services and infrastructure, housing, community services and facilities, behavioral health, economic and workforce development, public health and safety, childcare services, and food security. Most of these projects were actually not run by our county departments. They were nonprofit organizations, for-profit companies, municipalities, school districts as well. And in addition, the recovery office worked with our partners in the county to develop four different grant programs for industries that had been severely impacted by the pandemic, including for small businesses, volunteer fire companies, childcare facilities, and coming next year for our EMS agencies. Some important dates to consider. The date I mentioned, August 18, '22, was when the recovery plan was formally adopted. But the reason that we're here today, December 31, 2024, is our obligation deadline. All of the funding needs to be obligated formally by the commissioners to specific projects ahead of this deadline, and then December 31, 2026, which is the date at which all of that funding needs to be expended. Next slide. Some highlights of where we are right now. As of the third quarter, which was our last reporting period for Treasury, we have about $82.6 million currently expended. This includes 30 projects which have been completed and another 50 or so that are over 50% done. Well, can you go back real quick? During our regular review process, though, we identified the $53.9 million that is still on track to be spent on time, but we also identified $24.9 million in spending that's not likely to be spent by the December 2026 deadline, which is resulting in the action before you today. Next slide. So because all of this funding needs to be reobligated ahead of the December 31 deadline, we're recommending the reobligation of $3.1 million from four projects from subrecipients, $19.4 million from 11 county projects, and $2.4 million from three canceled projects. There are also two other projects that are being transferred between themselves, but that was at the direction of the projects themselves. So it's our recommendation here today that we reobligate the remaining $24.9 million into projects that align with the recovery plan. This maximizes the flexibility of our spending, reduces the administrative burden and reporting burden, both on the office specifically, but on the county in general, and also for county projects that would be funded, would be able to be funded for longer. This provides the opportunity for general fund cost savings. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. I'd like to make a motion... Any questions? Before I... No? All clear? All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number one, as described by Mr. Eli Gilman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mckeesha. Any board comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, approval of transfer of general assigned fund balance amount dedicated to funding in alignment with the county adopted recovery plan.
Just come down a few slides. I passed the end of the budget presentation. Yeah, right there. Good. So following what Eli has presented, we have a staff recommendation to assign fund balance, which would be up to 26 million or not to exceed 26 million. Before we talk about that action, I just wanted to, by example, show you, because in recent years, the board has approved the assignment of fund balance for particular things, and the first time that was done was in 2020. So when the board takes a formal action and assigns fund balance, it shows up in our audited financial statements at year-end, and you can see this is for illustration purposes when you're looking at 2021. We had two categories at the end of 2021, pension funding or pension contributions of assigned fund balance for future pension payments, that was 5 million, and then there was assigned fund balance for debt service expenditures, future debt service expenditures, which we've been drawing down on gradually over the years. We still have a little bit left in that category. But so... And we recently, the board took an action at the end of '23 that you'll see when the audited financial statements come out, that add a few more categories of assigned fund balance. So the assigned fund balance action that you'll take today will actually show up in the audited financial statements for 2024. And after things are reconciled with the ARPA, we'll have an exact amount and make sure that the proper accounting is done for that and that it's reflected within the financial statements. Could you turn to the next slide? Thank you. So as I said, it would be up to 26 million, and the reserve funding would be for future projects that align with the goals adopted in the county's recovery plan. Obviously, any spend down of the assigned fund balance will be by the approval of the board for specific projects as we move through the years ahead.
Great. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two, as described by Mr. Dean Dorton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, authorization to fund a Monco Forward loan to KMM Group LTD. Steve, come on up.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Stephen Forster, Director of Commerce. The Monco Forward Loan Program is a cooperative initiative between the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority and the County Commerce Department, designed to help businesses grow, increase productivity, and maximize the value of investments in the county. And I'd like to recognize the cooperation of the Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority, Ms. Alia Furman-Stanger, who had to leave just a few moments ago, but she has been a wonderful partner in cooperating with the evolving loan program and the loans that we've worked on together. Before you take your consideration is the approval of the transfer of $990,000 from the county to the RDA to make a Monco Forward loan in the same amount, so KMM Limited, two KMM Limited, the proceeds of which will be used to finance machinery and equipment and inventory to help KMM scale up production and to fill orders from new business development. KMM is a precision machining and grinding company, serving the medical device and aerospace industries, among others. KMM was formed through the merger of three generational family-owned companies, all located in Montgomery County, and the two owners, Mr. John Shegda and Mr. Eric Wilhelm, are both second-generation owners and operators and are here in attendance today. The combination of the three companies created a complementary merger. Each had different expertise, and together they're able to create end-to-end competition. Earlier this year, they had a ribbon-cutting for their newly expanded Hattborough headquarters, and Commissioner DeBello was there to offer remarks and to tour the facility. KMM has been ramping up their expansion throughout the year, and they are in the process of adding 100 new employees over the coming five years. They provide high-paying manufacturing jobs and training to their workforce through a dedicated education center and are registered with our county career link, PA Career Link Workforce Development Team. This loan will carry a 10-year term, fully self-amortizing over that term, and carry a 3.75% interest rate. Security for the loan, called the collateral that will secure the loan, will be $874,000 of new machinery and equipment, and they have offered as additional collateral, a Kellenberger grinding machine, $360,000, and we will have a second lien on inventory and personal guarantees from both owners. Before coming to you today, the loan was thoroughly underwritten by a contracted underwriter. The credit memo and underlying documentation was reviewed by the Commerce Department, recommended for approval by the RDA Loan Committee on November 6, and approved by the RDA Board of Directors on November 14. This will be the third Monco Forward loan made this year. Since inception, the program has loaned $2.85 million across 10 projects and leveraged nearly $38 million in total investment, that's a 13-to-1 leverage, and it has created and retained 195 jobs during that period. After this loan, we'll have approximately two projects remaining, and another $1 million loan is moving to underwriting this month. We respectfully request your approval to transfer the $990,000 to the RDA to make this loan to KMM, subject to the approval of the county solicitor and other terms and conditions to be contained in the loan documents. And we have Mr. Shegda and Mr. Wilhelm here today to answer any questions you may have about their company. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number three, as described by Mr. Steve Forster. It's been a long meeting, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your attendance.
All right. Next up, authorization of Tefra approval of Mainline Health Systems.
Before you today, it's a request by Mainline Health Systems, a not-for-profit corporation, for a resolution approving the issuance of a series of tax-exempt revenue bonds totaling $46.5 million to fund the refinancing of previously issued bonds benefiting Brynmar Hospital, Lenkenau Hospital, both located here in Montgomery County, and other medical facilities located in Chester County. The bonds are to be issued by the Chester County Health and Education Facilities Authority and have been approved by that authority pursuant to a Tefra hearing and resolution dated December 13, 2024. The hearing was properly advertised in the Times-Herald here in Montgomery County on December 5. Because the refinancing includes Montgomery County-based facilities, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, or Tefra, requires the approval of the highest elected official in each county where the funds are to be utilized. Approval of this bond will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Montgomery County by maintaining the fiscal health and operational excellence of these Mainline Health Systems hospitals. Neither the General Credit nor the Taxing Authority of Montgomery County are pledged to security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and it does not in any way impact the county's balance sheet. I therefore request your approval of this resolution, as presented by the solicitor, approving the issuance of the bonds. We have our solicitor, Ms. Calder, present to answer any questions you may have about the legal aspects, and we also have Ms. Holly Horstley of Ballard Spa Bond Counsel for Mainline Health Systems to answer any other questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number four, as described by Director of Commerce. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Authorization of planning assistance contracts for New Hanover, Upper Southford, Pottstown, Springfield, and Indian Valley Regional Planning Commission, Scott France.
Hello again. I have five contract renewals for our community planning assistance program. I'll be very brief and won't go into the details of each municipality, but they comprise general planning assistance, some specific studies, ordinance rewrites, and other scope items that are identified by the municipality in advance. These are three-year contracts. All four of these municipalities and one regional planning group are renewing an existing contract that expires at the end of this year, so the new contracts will go forward to December 31 of 2027, beginning January 1 of 2025. The municipalities are Springfield Township with a municipal share of $42,834, Pottstown Borough with a municipal share of $49,324, the New Hanover Township at $46,728, and Upper Southford Township at $29,854. And then the regional planning group is the Indian Valley Regional Planning Committee, one of four regional planning groups in the county. That contract, the municipal share, is $54,516. These are part of the program that includes 34 municipalities and four regional planning groups in total, and that is the first resolution.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number five, as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. I've got to stay with me. Any board comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, authorization of a short-term planning assistance contract for Hatboro, Horsham School District.
Yes, this is a standalone project. The length of contract runs from January 1, 2025, to April 15, 2025. And as a short-term contract, it's a 75% share. The school district would pay $10,327. This is an enrollment projection study, which is part of our program that has assisted, I believe, up to 14 of our school districts over the last 10 years. And in fact, Hatboro-Horsham is coming back for their fourth study over essentially that period of 10 years, as we continually monitor and help them plan ahead with expectations on student enrollment in the next 10 years. And that, I already said the amount.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number six as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Got to say, okay, thank you. Authorization to execute necessary documents to close out the DCNR grant for the Green Lane Master Plan. I'd like to invite Stephanie Tipton up to review this item.
Good afternoon. I present a resolution for the board's consideration to formally close out a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR. The grant provided $75,000 to support the creation of a master site development plan for Green Lane Park, the county's largest park, spanning approximately 3,400 acres. The comprehensive plan outlines the vision for the park's next 15 years, focusing on such things as park management and facility upgrades, natural resource protection and management, land acquisitions, expanding recreational opportunities, and accessibility. The plan reflects input from the public, a project steering committee, county staff, consultants, and organizations associated with the park. Developed by Simone Collins Landscape Architecture of Norristown, the final plan totals 276 pages and was completed at a cost of $150,000. The resolution is essential to finalize the grant closeout and seek reimbursement from DCNR. I respectfully recommend the board approve the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number seven as described by Ms. Stephanie Tipton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, authorization of municipal snow removal contracts.
Good afternoon again. I present a resolution for the board's consideration to authorize Montgomery County to enter into snow removal contracts with the following municipalities: Abington, Sheltonham, Hatfield, Horsham, Upper Dublin, Upper Gwinnett, and Upper Moreland. As you know, Montgomery County is responsible for maintaining 75 miles of roads and 131 bridges throughout the county during snow and ice events. While the county's workforce maintains many of these lane miles, it is both necessary and efficient to contract with local municipalities to maintain smaller portions of county-owned roadways. For instance, the county contracts with Horsham Township to manage 1.5 miles of roadway. Given their proximity and existing resources, Horsham's crews are better positioned to handle this limited stretch of roadway effectively. The proposed contracts will cover three storm seasons from 2024 through 2027. Under these agreements, the municipalities will provide the necessary equipment, materials, and personnel for snow and ice removal. In total, these contracts cover approximately 33 lane miles at an estimated cost of $50,243. The lane mile rate is determined using PennDOT standard classification and rates, and the cost of these contracts will be funded through the $5 vehicle registration fee. I respectfully recommend the board approve the resolution before you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number eight as described by Ms. Stephanie Tipton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We're going to take a short recess, five-minute recess. We'll be right back.
Next up, item nine, Authorization of Electronic Signatory for Grant Submissions to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. This is a little bit of housekeeping. When applying to the Commonwealth for grants, the county is permitted to submit the grant applications electronically to be eligible to utilize the electronic application system. The Commonwealth requires the county to designate a county employee to serve as signatory on the electronic grant applications. Resolution before you designates Jasmine Leatherberry, the county's Senior Grants and Development Manager, to be the signatory for the county to submit grant applications to the Commonwealth.
That it?
That's it.
Oh, wow, that is super fast. Okay, motion to approve resolution number nine as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Number 11, Commissioner's Appointment to the Montgomery County Prison Board of Inspectors. I'd like to make a motion to approve Darnell Hinton to the Montgomery County Prison Board of Inspectors for a term that begins immediately and ends on December 19th, 2027. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment? Hearing none. Moving to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Commissioner's Appointment and a Reappointment to the Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jamila Winder and to reappoint Eleanor Desi to the Montgomery County Community College Board of Trustees for terms that begin immediately and end on December 19th, 2030. Is there a second?
Second.
So, the two of you. Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment? Hearing none. Go ahead.
I would just like to say, you know, I actually wanted to make the motion, but...
Oh, sorry.
I'm, you know, proud to support Mr. Winder and think it's a great boost to the community college for you to bring all of your experience in 20, I think, 20 years in education. And, you know, the community college, as we've all talked about, has done some extraordinary things for all the community. I think they're gonna add value and continue to help them innovate in all ways that they can.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Moving to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And I'd just like to say, this is an honor. Just growing up in Montgomery County for 48 years. I started my career in higher education. It's a body of work that I'm quite proud of. Working at Drexel, working for an international education company, Laureate Education. And community colleges across the country, you know, have real opportunity to create options for students to, you know, achieve higher education. So I look forward to working with the board and advancing the college's mission. So thank you to my colleagues for the support. All right, personnel. I'll come up Marty to review the personnel, please, in person.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's Personnel List. It's a five-page document dated December 19th, 2024 with time frame of 9:04 a.m. These transactions have been reviewed by management and are now presented for your consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 19th, 2024 Personnel Presentation as given by Mr. Marty Mas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Advertisement of Bids, RFEIs, RFIs, and RFPs, Montgomery County Exhibit A. I'd like to make a motion to approve the advertisements of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Awards of Contract, Montgomery County Exhibit B. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second?
Second.
That was in the... Yes, like, second. Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comments?
I just have a quick comment, which is, I think I saw somewhere, I can't remember here. There's a contract for poll books. I am hoping that we have electronic poll books as soon as is practical.
Thank you for phrasing it that way, yeah.
Yes. I know it takes time to train. I know it takes time for all these other things. But, you know, perhaps this is the last time we have printed poll books. And we have a year to work on getting electronic poll books in place. Maybe we can try more of the maples here in the hall, or maybe I can be ready, but then be ready by '26 to have electronic poll books. Just want to add that comment.
Okay. Any additional comments? All right. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, Awards of Contract, Southeast PA Regional Task Force, Exhibit C. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right. General public comment. David Morgan. Come on up.
David Morgan from Ambler. And commissioners, I thought that Barbara Furman had a great idea of having another meeting about this tax increase, and it wasn't adopted for her idea. But she does feel what's going on and what we're gonna be facing. So I challenge everybody to go home and look at their tax bill. Find that April tax bill and you see 4.788 percent, sorry, mils, 4.788 mils rather than an amount of 5.178. So that you see that there is between those amounts, 18% almost increase. Unless somehow the county got more money after, I must say, size April. Seems like that is what should be noted to the press, if there is anybody hearing the press, or if you know anybody who can put that clarification out there. That's what I'm seeing. And I don't know how many generated 5.178 for mils, as was in the presentation when I looked at DeBello asking about the question. So we could have had a meeting, maybe at the community college, and going over how to cap the capital budget more. Capital budget has lots of large expenses. If you have that spreadsheet that was put out, planners having often 61 million or so in their budget each year. The county campus plan with the 400 million-plus death center involved is a question mark. When's it gonna end? When's it gonna end, the repairs to the courthouse? What about the building here? When is all the project cost for capital improvements gonna be finishing? Because people should be considering more than buildings. County buildings are needed, but we can often work from home, too, to save funds, and we can try to think of capping these, not having them continue on and on. I think you were mentioning a 5% was explored for tax increase rather than what seems to be 18. But I don't know what happened with those discussions, because we, that was the end of your discussion last time in the budget hearing, when I remember it. So that if we look at this comparison, see that the Chester County had 13% just this week, and the Commissioner Eric Rowe is saying how it's gonna be hard for people. After 0013, we have 813, 17. Then at Bucks, they were the worst, they're the best, because they have now two zeros of tax increases. So if you need a copy or you wanna photograph this chart I made, there is what we've seen. A change from the best going to the worst, and the worst going to the best for the tax burdens. It's like the horse is staying in the stable and not galloping. Here, we're galloping. Horse hike, the hiking horse. So now, I think, on a positive thing, I might just say, ooh, in that time. Great course last week and this season of year. Just the pleasure of hearing Judge seeing Judge Page being, oh, holy night. I think he captured the season well, and hopefully we'll have more positive endeavors like that, remembering how in Christmas was birth of Christ. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny England?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jenny England. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Aspire Child and Family Services. I'm speaking today on behalf of our CEO, Drew Friedman, who was unable to attend. Our work at Aspire, providing ABA services to children with autism, is driven by a deep commitment to supporting families in need. In September of 2024, we submitted an expansion request to Magellan Behavioral Health for a new ABA center in Horsham. Today, I am addressing the December 6th denial for our expansion request by Magellan. This denial has significant implications for the families we serve and the broader community. Following this denial, Aspire urgently requested a meeting with Magellan and county officials. During a meeting on December 13th, senior Magellan leadership explained that due to alleged financial deficits, they cannot authorize our expansion to the Horsham location. This decision contradicts previous communications, including the letter we received on December 6th, and places an undue burden on families seeking care. The county's financial situation, as explained by LeAnn Lawyer, is dire. Resources have been exhausted to keep providers afloat during COVID, leading to a crisis where providers are closing and families are struggling to access necessary services. The restrictions imposed by Magellan on provider expansion further exacerbate this issue, limiting access to EPSDT benefits and placing additional strains on families. This decision will not result in any cost savings for Magellan or the county. However, we fear it will lead to discrimination against children and families with the highest need for services, particularly those with Medicaid. The county must ensure children have access to care when they need it, where they need it, and without delay under the federal EPSDT mandate. Magellan's measures are strongly reminiscent of United Healthcare's cost-cutting measures, which was recently publicized by ProPublica. These measures have reduced access to ABA therapy, despite United Healthcare acknowledging it as the gold standard treatment. This strategy has led to denials of necessary therapy, raising concerns about potential violations of federal law. While I believe Montgomery County would never sanction such practices, this alarming trend in our industry highlights serious concerns with blanket denials, such as Magellan's blanket expansion denials. When these occur without proactive communication from the county, we must address these issues to ensure families receive necessary support and services without unnecessary barriers and in compliance with federal mandates. I urge the county commissioners to take immediate action to address this crisis and instruct Magellan to reconsider their decision and approve the expansion for our new Horsham center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your important work. I certainly understand the need for it, and I believe all of us have been briefed on the situation. So thank you for being here to share your perspective. Any other public comments?
Samantha Suarez. Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Samantha Suarez. I am mother of Koi Screen. He is four years old, and he currently attends Behavioral Health Clinic at Aspire, which I'm here to say how beautiful Aspire is. Koi is nonverbal still, and he's attending Aspire, which we consider school, daily, Monday through Friday. At Aspire, he receives services to help him socialize, for him to eat, and even walk. He's a tiptoe walker at the moment, so these services, including a daily routine, is so important. With your approval, it will allow us to attend a school a lot closer to home. That way, Koi and other children just like Koi can thrive and be high-functional, beautiful autistic children. Thank you.
And thank you for your advocacy for Koi. I have a four-year-old at home, and so I certainly understand, not fully, the journey you're on as a parent. So thank you for being here to share your perspective. Yeah. Jason Goodman? Jason, welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jason Landau Goodman. I'm from Lower Marion Township. I'm also here today in my capacity as Board Chair of the Pennsylvania Youth Congress. I also come with my background as an attorney and working in LGBT public policy in Montgomery County for 15 years. So I'm coming together today from the Pennsylvania Youth Congress, which is Pennsylvania's first and only statewide LGBT youth organization. We're also Pennsylvania's only PA-based statewide LGBT advocacy organization in Harrisburg. And so I'm here today particularly to share that yesterday we debuted our Montgomery County LGBTQ policy agenda. It includes 50 pages, so I know it's a little bit of a read, but 15 policy points for U.S. Montgomery County Commissioners, as well as 18 points for the new Montgomery County LGBTQIA+ Advisory Commission to take a look at for both your operations as a county, but also what powers you do have for public policy. Since the election, there has been a lot of concern from LGBTQ residents across the county and across the Commonwealth. From P Y C, we've helped put together 10 LGBTQ town halls across the state, including in Upper Marion. Tonight, we're partnering with the Welcome Project Pennsylvania and the Eastern PA Trans Equity Project for a town hall that's now over capacity at over 100 folks in Hattlero. So folks want to talk about these issues, know about their rights, and know what they can do going forward, especially looking into next year, knowing that we have at least 50,000 LGBTQ residents across the county. So with this guide, we hope that you're able to use it to look at what you can do. Particularly, I do want to mention that the highest priority is related to nondiscrimination protections. And we're very aware that you've done research, and past commissioners have done research. But we believe there might be some new information that you may not have been aware of that we wanted to bring forward. So it's in the report, but just to highlight that the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act in 43 PS 962.1 does explicitly provide authority for county governments to proceed to enact a nondiscrimination ordinance. Allina County is a Class II county. They've had an ordinance for 15 years. There are other counties considering moving forward. So if you do have information on why Montgomery County cannot proceed, that would be very helpful to know. But given this report and given the different legal legal things that we found through your review, we hope that you'll be able to revisit this conversation. We come to you with the utmost respect. We know you've spent time on this issue. But given the uncertainty that's in the future, explicit protections under the law are absolutely critical, not just interpretations that we're hoping the courts will proceed with. So again, I thank you for your time and appreciate your continued communication on this issue.
Yeah, absolutely. Look forward to reviewing that report, and certainly we'll make sure that we get the report in the hands of our advisory committee. And I will have our solicitor, because we did spend a lot of time looking into how we could do it, and told no. So if there's new information that we don't know, by all means, we can reopen that part of our commitment to nondiscrimination. So thank you for being here. Okay, that's it. All right. Any closing commissioner comments? We're all tired, right?
I had a couple.
Go ahead.
One, I just want to say this is some really sad news I heard this morning. I just got a message that Steve Cozen passed away.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
And, you know, Steve Cozen, who was founder of the Cozen Law Firm, of course, but a Mount Col resident, a leader in the community, and, you know, someone who, he invested deeply in the Jewish community, including in the White School Museum. He was recently honored with the humanitarian award in the spring. Also, someone committed to voting rights. He founded a fellowship at Penn at the Law School for students interested in voting rights. He served on the Transition Committee for Commissioner Winder and I on voting rights, and will be deeply missed by many people in Montgomery County and the Philadelphia area. And I just want to convey my condolences to his family and all of those who do him.
That's unfortunate. I've had the honor of meeting him last year. All right, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. As we mentioned, this is our last board meeting of 2024. So I want to thank all of you and those online for being here and partnering with us on this work. And look forward to seeing you all in January. So next Board of Commissioners meeting will be Thursday, January 9th, at 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the December 19th meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, we're gonna have a quick salary board, so we're gonna invite our controller up. Do I need to say there's... Okay. All right, do we have any public comments for salary board?
Yes, you do have someone for public comment.
Are we do? Okay.
Tom Landau, Hattlero Township. Commissioners?